Where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe. Providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies and Penske truck rentals. Details at plumuslake self-storage.com.
Close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for discussion. Do we have any discussion on the item? Well, if there's none, I just want to say for one, I'm happy with the way things are going over there. I mean, we took a property while we didn't take a property, we helped facilitate a property, had a lot of issues. And seems to me, there's very little to no issues at all now. I got a thumbs up from our awesome sheriff over there, so that's great news. And when there's a call every other day out there. So I'll entertain him. Yeah, it used to be, it used to be.
Do the chair.
Yes, sir.
I will move for.
Roll call, please.
Supervisor Flores.
Aye.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer.
Aye.
Supervisor Baines.
Aye.
Supervisor Conant.
Aye. Motion. We're going to move on to item number 26.
Public hearing to consider project number U-19-035, a general plan amendment from Ag-80 to industrial commercial. A rezone from Ag to commercial industrial plan development. A tentative parcel map to divide 15.44 acres into a 5.32 acre parcel. And a 10.12 acre parcel design review to establish a 123,709 square foot self-storage complex with RV storage. And a use permit to allow for reduced agricultural buffering between adjacent uses and proposed development.
Yes, thank you, Casey Murray, associate planner. This, the planning commission did consider this project in staff's initial recommendation for denial at its June 16, 2020 meeting. The planning commission did not express opposition to this project. Their recommendation for denial was made as a mechanism to elevate this project to the board. To have policy direction provided regarding the urbanization of the Riego Road corridor between Sutter Point and the Sutter Placer County line. The board considered this project on August 10, 2021 and unanimously voted to remand this project back to staff to complete the processing of the application. The planning commission considered this project in staff's recommendation for approval at its May 18, 2022 meeting. There was no opposition regarding this project. And the planning commission unanimously recommended approval of this project to the board by a 7-0 vote. This site is located at the southwest corner of Riego Road and Pleasant Grove Road. The site is developed with a fruit stand at its northern end. And residence and accessory structures near the center. The parcel includes agricultural row crops, strawberries and fallowed fields. The project site and parcels to the northwest and south are zoned agriculture and general planned Ag 80. Rye grass and rural residential use is located to the north. Uncultivated land and rural residential is located to the west and south. Property to the east is within Placer County. A mini-market is located at the southwest corner of Riego Road and Pleasant Grove Road. Other parcels to the east in Placer County consist of rural residential uses. A parcel located northeast of the site is occupied by an indoor and outdoor storage facility for boats, RVs and trailers. The site is located approximately 2,100 feet east of the Sutter Point specific plan. And approximately 1.5 miles west of the urban area of the Placer Vineyard specific plan in Placer County. Proposed 5.32 acre parcel one, which is the northern parcel, is proposed to remain unchanged and may continue to be used agriculturally. The fruit stand located at the northern end of the parcel will remain. The proposed 10.12 acre parcel two, the southern parcel, is proposed to be developed with a self-storage facility. With an office building and parking for RVs. Paved driveway with gated entry. The facility is proposed to be surrounded by six-foot tall block wall. The circulation area of the facility is proposed to be paved. Proposed in front of the wall along the Pleasant Grove Road adjacent to the paved parking spaces. And I'll bring up the project site plan here. Lighting is proposed adjacent. To the project site, the photometric plan received for this project demonstrates that the light will not shine off the property, which is consistent with county standards. Drainage is proposed to be handled by retention underground high-density polyethylene chambers located at the south end of the parcel. RV parking is proposed over these retention chambers area. A final detailed drainage design of all proposed improvements is proposed to be submitted at the time of building permit submittal. The final design will include the onsite pipe collection system transferring all onsite runoff from this development to the retention chambers. As a project condition, the applicant is required to pay the project's fair share contribution for future traffic signals. And improvements at the Riego Road and Pleasant Grove Road intersection when deemed necessary by the county. And the applicant is also required to construct improvements to Pleasant Grove Road along the project's frontage. This project is subject to the agricultural buffering requirements of the zoning code as parcels located west and south of the proposed self-storage complex are zoned agriculture. And these parcels consist of uncultivated land. The buffering standards require a 50-foot buffer between uncultivated land and the proposed development. This project requires use permit approval to allow for a reduced agricultural buffer as development will be located within the required buffer areas. The site is proposed to be separated from the adjacent agricultural property by the proposed perimeter wall and proposed storage buildings. The general plan amendment and rezone is recommended for approval given the compatibility of this project with the existing nearby commercial and industrial designated areas. Its location along Riego Road and consistency with the general plan policies as stated in the staff report. The initial study prepared for this project determined it could have a potentially significant impacts. However, a total of 11 mitigation measures have been included to reduce impacts to a less significant level. And no comments have been received on the environmental document. And so the planning commission and staff are recommending that the board supervisors approve this project with the findings listed in the staff report and the conditions of approval as attached. I'll take any questions you may have at this time. Thank you.
All right, we'll open up the public hearing. And I do not have any, any speaker cards for that, so we'll close the public hearing.
Excuse me, Chair, the applicant actually is here.
Oh, would the applicant like? All right, just.
I know you guys are busy today. I just wanted to say thank you to everybody who worked on this project. Casey, Doug, who's not here, but I wanted on the record that he's very helpful to me. All your guys' time that you spent studying the project and, and I don't really need to reargue the merits of it. I think it speaks for itself. Any questions you have, I'm here to answer them.
Yep. Well, any questions? No? Well, thank you very much. I appreciate you coming up and.
I do have one comment.
Okay, we'll bring it back to the board and we'll.
Okay. I just want to thank you for sticking it out with us and for doing business in Sutter County. We appreciate the development going on there and Riego Road especially. And I think the timing is right for what you're doing. And it's more business to Sutter County and it's fantastic. Thanks for hanging in there. And we're looking forward to having you there on Riego Road.
I appreciate it very much. Thank you, Mr. Flores.
Do the chair.
Yes, sir.
Move to approve.
Oh, hold on. You have a comment?
Do the chair. Yeah, so first of all, I'd like to thank you also for sticking with us. This is a great project. This will help. When Sutter Point people start to move in there, they're going to want the storage facilities. On that Placer County side, we're only a couple of miles already from houses already there. They will be wanting storage facilities there. It's a great business opportunity for you guys and I think you guys will do well there.
Thank you.
And I appreciate your work and continued working with us in the county. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
I personally would like to say that we welcome the new business into Sutter County. And this is, this is ag ground that we're going to rezone here, but here's the thing about this. There was no opposition here. It's in the right spot and makes sense. And it's not going to interfere with everything else around it. Support from the neighbors, which is awesome. So thank you very much for sticking with it over these last year and actually probably a couple of years now.
I had a lot more hair back when I started.
Trust me, we all did.
All right, we have Supervisor Flores, Supervisor Baines.
I'll second the motion.
Seconded by Supervisor Flores. Can we get a roll?
Supervisor Flores.
Aye.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer.
Yes.
Supervisor Baines.
Aye.
Supervisor Conant.
Aye.
An ordinance of the county of Sutter amending the zoning of certain parcels in the.
All right, thank you very much. And we will move on to public hearing number 27.
Public hearing to consider project number U-22-0001. Design review to amend condition number 14 of previously approved project number U-18-054. To eliminate the requirement to provide fencing along the eastern portion of the project site.
Good afternoon, Neil Hay from Development Services once again. So this project and your staff report includes a number of recommended actions. There's a total of five of them. The first two, I guess I kind of want to explain how we got here is that this project was originally approved in November of 2019 by my department. This project application was submitted and reviewed under the county's requirements for a general truck yard. Prior to the changes that took place from the ad hoc committee. So that's why people that may visit this site or may see it is that it has some, some different requirements than are required of the new type of truck yards. But one of the requirements at the time was to essentially put perimeter fencing with the plastic flats that reduce visibility by 90%. Six to seven-foot fence on essentially all four sides of the property. The challenge with this property is that on the eastern side, I think is all of your board is aware. It includes an irrigation canal that runs north-south. I want to have a PowerPoint that has some photos. I have a site plan that's included in your packet that I may kind of pull up.
Would it be possible for me to pull up the staff report just so I can? Please.
Thank you. That it's orientated so that north is on the left-hand side. And so the top of the page is essentially shows where the fence and the irrigation canal is. And so the county provided conditions of approval. They were originally prepared in November of 19 and then they were modified. And I believe it was June of 20, where the location of the fence in question on the east side as to whether or not it could be on the west side of the canal or the, or the east side of the canal. And essentially provide a 15-foot gap between the canal, the water and the fence. The, and that was provided through the canal operators, water extension that they essentially want to be able to do the maintenance they require on the canal. And so by having a fence, their preferences on the west side so the trucks and the trailers wouldn't essentially back into that space. There is, you know, obviously area on both sides of the canal. That's what my PowerPoint will show. I went up there today. And essentially you took that there's between 16 and 20 feet of space on the east side of the canal. There's just that there's a portion of the fence as denoted on the site plans, kind of the northern, at least one-third, maybe almost half that has trees along it. And those trees essentially extend down to the, the banks of the canal. So it does make, it has very limited access. All those trees would either need to be removed or trimmed up rather significantly. So you're, the reason why we're here is that originally the applicants and they're here with their council. Essentially wanted to have the condition of approval essentially removed from their project so that they would not have to put this fence in. When they went, so that requires an action through the planning commission. At the planning commission, the planning commission made a motion that they would essentially after much discussion, essentially put the fence on the west side of the canal with a 15-foot gap. And then the applicants, they actually weren't present at that time due to conversation and confusion about, I'll just say the votes that took place. So they appealed the decision before your board to have the, this condition of approval reconsidered. And so the staff report that my department's prepared and I have Steve Geiger, our senior planner as well for, available for any technical planning questions. But it really comes down to whether or not a fence should be located on the property on the eastern boundary, either partially. And so there are some areas. So at this point on the property, essentially the adjoining property has a fence that runs east-west. And from that point southward, there's a, certainly it's, it's open. And the applicants, owners of the, of the truck company, they actually own this adjacent parcel. And so as part of their reason for essentially maybe not putting in the fence here is that they have future plans that they may seek to put a truck yard here. Once again, it was a condition of approval of this project to require fencing on all four sides. So that's why we're here. The, the staff report includes, like I say, a number of options that, one, the fence could be placed along the, the west side of the canal. Provide the 15-foot buffer, which is essentially shown. Two, it could be placed on the east side from the, the fence southward, as I pointed out. Or no fence at all on the eastern side. And I'm happy to answer any questions. It may be easiest if I were to maybe come back after the public hearing and you may hear from the project applicant and their comments.
Yeah, let's do that. Let's open up the public hearing and let's start out with Michael Barrett. You want to start out, sir? And.
Good afternoon. My name is Michael Barrett, 1168 Live Oak Boulevard. I'm counsel for the applicant. And what I've done for you, hold, don't hit it yet. What I've done for you is I've done a couple of short videos so you can see and I'm, and I know that most of you have gone out and seen this anyway. But basically they own all of the property all the way to that fence you see. The one fence has got two 15-foot gates on either side to allow full access to the Butte Water Canal to access the canal. But what I want you to understand is that canal ends about, about two-thirds through the property. And at this particular time doesn't serve any of the properties down there. And they're looking at future engineering to be able to utilize this entire area. And in essence, either end the canal here because it no longer serves anyone down the road or to put it underground. And so that they would have further use of their property by forcing them to put a fence on the west side. You'd in essence be taking away about almost 40 feet of, of property here. But what I'm trying to show you, go ahead and play the video and I'll just narrate very quickly. Is you can see here that this, this line of trees is for all intents and purposes, a fence. The purpose of the perimeter fence is to in essence provide site blocking. And, and they've got the fence all the way around the other sides. The other side of the property is also industrial use. And that wall of trees is solid for basically, as you saw on the site plan, about more than half all the way down. Now I walked down all the way to where those trees are and I took a second video for the second half and we'll put that up. And so now I'm starting again to the north. You see the line of trees coming down and it's very solid. I mean, you basically can't see anything. And then just towards the back of the industrial property, you get a little bit of an open area. Then you're going to see a wood slat fence over here, which is the back end of their property. And there that is, and then I'm going to zoom in down to the back of the truck yard. And you'll see that they've already installed the chain link fence along the back southern end with the green slats. And so they own all of that property over there as well. And right there where that bridge is, is where the canal ends. And there's just a small drainage ditch where they could put in a culvert, just like there's a culvert currently underneath Pasail Road. And so there could be possible access over to that property in the future. So they're not asking you to totally do away with the fence. They're asking for a temporary waiver. Right now it's not necessary sight-wise, at least from the property that's, that's being blocked. The trees do that job. There's plenty of access for Butte Water Canal. And they want to preserve their entire property because the law allows them to use their property in any way that's not inconsistent with the Butte Water District. And this would accomplish that purpose. And in the future, condition 14 could be reimposed if circumstances change, the trees come down or other things happen. Thank you.
Let's move on to our next, well, let's move on to our next. If, if any of the, any of the board has a question for you, Mike, we'll ask you up there again. Let's get through these. Let's call it Jim Hawes, please.
Okay, Jim, don't need to hold it. My name is Jim Hawes. I'm with Hartley Insurance. I am the insurance broker for the Mahmud's and I place all the insurance on this facility. Couple of points other than what has been said, which is pretty self-evident. But from an insurance point of view, it is a beautiful facility. I mean, it's obviously very well fenced, south end, the west side along the highway and the north, the gate. The whole front of it is beautifully submitted, parking spaces, the building itself. Point being that the facility itself is very neat, very orderly, very professional. It's very well done. As respects the fencing on the east side. From an insurance point of view, we don't feel having the fence or the lack thereof creates any kind of a liability exposure. Or diminishes anything or, or is unsafe or safe. In fact, quite the contrary, in my two-cent humble opinion, putting up a fence structure, especially if it's on the west side of the canal, does quite the. does quite the opposite. The canal itself, as far as hazard or exposure base, the canal itself, as far as being an attractive nuisance, all the challenges that you can have with canals, any canal, not having a fence, you can hear, you can see, you have quick access should a need ever arise. By putting up a fence, you cannot hear, you cannot see, you cannot access. You have to go all the way around. And if such a thing should happen, you lose all that. And like I said, right now, you can, from the trucking facility, you can see it, you can hear it, you can access it if such a thing ever were to arise. Whereas the fence, from a safety point of view, in my humble opinion, you lose all that. So I'm purely speaking from an insurance point of view and that kind of thing. But, you know, from an insurance point of view, we're okay with there not being a fence on the east side. So, and again, that's pretty much all I have to say. And that's it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Jim. We'll call up Tariq Mahmood.
Hello, my name is Tariq Mahmood. As you know all the stories, so I just want to request to be amend the fence because you guys know the story, so I don't have to repeat that. So I just want to request to be, you know, we already installed the fence. So then, you know, we have to pull that out by the requirement for the sunset canal. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Harpreet Tiara.
Can you guys hear? Okay, my name's Harpreet Tiara. Actually, I went to the properties a couple of times, and we talked with the couple of you guys already about the fence. If they put the fence 15 feet away from the canal and the neighbor attached the fence to their fence, and the property becomes to the neighbors. That's the rules here in the Sutter County, I believe. So that's why we requested not to put any fence on the either side of the canal, either on the east side or on the west side. Because I don't think it's necessary to put the fence because there's already canal. If somebody is going to jump over the fence, over the canal to get to their properties, their gate's always open too, and they can get them through the gate. Or if people the fence, they can cut the fence and get them to their properties. It's easy enough. That's all I got to say. I think you guys should remove the fence. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Harpreet. All right, if there's no more speaker cards, we're going to close the public hearing, and we're going to bring it back to the board for discussion. And who would like to start out?
The chair.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Obviously, this is in my district. And Tariq, you and I and her family have met many times, and we know this property very well. And the one thing that I want to say is that it's always very easy from a county standpoint, working with you guys. You guys have really been over backwards, doing everything you can to do things correctly. Looking at this, I don't see any reason why we couldn't just waive the requirement for the fence. You own property on half the distance on the other side anyways. You've already put up a fence, and the Water District made you take it down. So I would hate to see you spend money when I know it's been a great amount of investment for you guys. And, you know, we've all, I think, taken, or most of us have taken a walk around that property and see that you have a really nice facility and are doing business the right way. So I would be recommending to approve this with, I believe, actually, Neil, let me ask you that. Would it be condition number, option number five then, that we would, if we're removing the fence altogether?
Yes, it would be option number five. And then I would also point out that, recommendation number three, specifies a refund of the $1,000 appeal fund due to some of the confusion that occurred at the planning commission. So depending on which actions you were to choose, we'd at least want you to, we recommend you choose option three, and then, yes, you're specifying.
So three and five, okay. That's what I would recommend. Thank you.
All right, bringing back supervisor Flores.
Thank you. Neil, just a quick question. I needed some clarification on why the planning commission recommended the fence in the first place to the side that you said that they did. I'm still unclear on what the purpose of the recommendation was.
So originally, I believe that they were, to some degree, agreeing with staff's original condition of approval that designated a requirement to put a fence on one side of the canal or the other. They heard, sorry, they heard comments from a representative from the Water Canal, and he, which he's not able to attend today. I did speak with him and such. But at the planning commission, he mentioned that the Water District canal operators would prefer the fence be on the west side so that they would have essentially a dedicated clear access on the west side of the canal for their maintenance activities.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Moving over, bring it back to supervisor.
Through the chair. So Neil, one of the conditions we've had on all truck stops in the path has been a fence on all four sides, correct?
Once we got to a certain date, yes. I mean, there are some fences, it wasn't a previous requirement, but yes. With the 90% slat, for example, is one of the newer aspects of the requirement.
You know, I'd like to say you guys did a great job out there at your facility. It's top-notch, really well-designed, well-engineered. And this fence thing, it's kind of a nightmare. But Mr. Barrett is absolutely correct when he says that most of that property on the west side, maybe on the east side of the property, is already fenced because it's got trees that you couldn't get through without a chainsaw. And then if you got through the trees, you'd have to get through the containers on the other side of that. So it's pretty well fenced already on the west, excuse me, on the east side of the property, about two-thirds of it. So what I would like to see us do is for them to continue a fence since it's been a condition in the past, from the end of the trees to the end of that property, which wouldn't be a very big fence. And have them look at maybe meeting with the Water District and see if that ditch even needs to be there in the future so they can expand their operations. Anyway, that's what my opinion is on the matter.
Through the chair, unless you guys need to go.
No.
Okay. So, yeah, I mean, I would suggest not doing that, and here's why. I mean, we've talked about that that ditch is almost just going to be overflow anyways, and they own the property on the other side of the ditch. So if they put up a fence, then they would be having to remove it again if they were ever to do some sort of tie-in to the other property that's on the south side there, which is why I would recommend just waiving the requirement to put any fence at all. It seems pretty simple to me, but.
All right, well, I'll.
I don't, I'd like to set a policy up where we require some to put fences and others not. There is already a fence, realistically, on the east side of the east side of that property. Two-thirds of it is, you couldn't climb through that with, I don't know, with a chainsaw in two hours. So, anyway, so it's pretty well fenced there, so.
Through the, oh, I was going to make a motion.
No, I'd like to say something really fast, but I'm going to let you guys. Supervisor Baines, would you like to say something?
So like I said, I have a question for the applicant. I'm trying to find common ground here. Supervisor Conant brought up a great, you know, the comment he made about, it's in the ordinance right now, every other truck yard has, you know, they're all fenced in. Are you guys willing to put in a fence from that?
Would you mind taking the, take the stand, please? All right. No, please, please come on up. You can videotape.
So, yes, I've discussed with the Mahmood family, in essence, putting a fence from where the green slat fence is on the south side and coming north to the tree line, as Supervisor Conant observes. A lot of those trees are line trees. And in essence, it would really de-beautify the area. You'd take all those trees down, and it just, you pave paradise and turn it into a parking lot. And so, yeah, if that's ultimately, you know, the way you want to go. But in essence, again, all you're doing is fencing their ag property, which right now has a, what do you call it, a line fence, you know, typical to the area of barbed wire. And it's going to be much easier in the event, because we are going forward with the Butte County Butte Water Canal to try to, in essence, access that area and either remove the canal at Passo North because it doesn't really serve anything down there. Their ag land has water, the land next door has water. So it's not serving anything that far down. So that would greatly expand their truck yard and their ability to use the property. So like Supervisor McKelley says, in essence, we'd be putting up a fence to take it down later. Any other questions?
No.
Oh, sorry, do you have comments?
No, I agree with Supervisor McKelley. I agree with you in the fact that when it comes to these fences, well, first of all, my belief in the fence is it keeps the eyesores away. But in this case, you don't really have the eyesore. You have the trees that are covering the eyesore. That's what I look at. And if you ask me if there's a truck yard moving in, let's say, for instance, we just went through this a few months ago. Yes, it was in an area that I do believe, but that's a different project. And every project is different. I believe every, every truck parking should have minimum, the asphalt grindings, minimum. Not granite, but asphalt grindings. Because you get no dust from asphalt grindings. And everything here forward, I believe, we're working on is or asphalt. But once again, we've had findings, I believe, when, at the last meeting, we sat down with the neighbors, which is, that's what we do. When we're supervisors, we want to hear from both sides. And the neighbor said, you know what? We'd be more in supportive of this project if they had a taller fence than six foot. Went to the applicants, and they said, yeah, we'll go eight feet. Worked out for both sides. Here, not hearing anything from the neighbors. So I'm assuming that they're going to be fine with it. When I've looked at the property and I see the fence, I'm like, well, that covers everything up. And you literally have a 30-foot tall fence, which covers the tops of the trucks. So on this particular item, I do agree with Supervisor McKelley there.
Through the chair.
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion to approve with options three and five.
All right, we have a motion.
To the chair.
Yes, CEO.
I wanted to clarify, I think we need options one, three, and five. But I want to.
Yes, please.
Yeah.
I'll amend the motion to include options one, three, and five.
All right, looking for a second. If there's no second, I will second that motion. Can we get a roll call, please?
Supervisor McKelley?
Aye.
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer?
Aye.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Conant?
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on to item number 28.
Thank you.
Approval to appoint two members to serve on the Sutter Cemetery District Board of Trustees for four-year terms ending on June 14, 2026.
Good afternoon, board members. Hope you're enjoying Flag Day today, June 14. I wanted to bring to your attention that we have a, we have two vacancies on the Sutter Cemetery District Board of Trustees. There are three applications that we have received. Once we have flown the application process, and we have three applications. And we have a letter from the Sutter Cemetery District, who has reviewed the applications and for the two seats that they have available, and they're recommending Jean Brown and Susan Eggleston for reappointment. So at this point, I'm asking for you to decide who you would like to have serve on that board.
Well, thank you very much, Donna. I'm going to bring, first of all, do we have any speaker cards? No speaker cards? Is there any public comment? No public comment. We're going to bring it back to the board for questions. Are there any questions?
Through the chair.
Yes, sir.
Move to approve.
All right, you know what? Can we wait for Supervisor?
I'll second.
Flores really fast for the roll call. So for the record, we have a motion by Supervisor Baines, second by Supervisor McKelley.
Excuse me, chairman. Can you include the two applicants that you guys are nominating in the motion?
Yeah. Oh, yes, please. Can you please call their names out, please? Oh, the, for the motions, Supervisor Baines for the motion, and Supervisor McKelley for the second.
And the applicants?
Applicants, yes, the two applicants.
Is that as recommended, Jean Brown and Susan Eggleston?
Yes, thank you. All right. Roll call, please.
Supervisor McKelley?
Aye.
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer?
Aye.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Conant?
Aye.
And thank you all for showing up today. Yeah, we have the best-looking cemetery, I believe, in the state. Yes. Moving on to item number 29.
Approval of an interim groundwater well permitting process pursuant to the governor's executive order N-7-22 issued on March 28, 2022.
Jeff Williams with Development Services. What we bring before you today is an interim groundwater well permitting process pursuant to the governor's executive order. We're recommending that the board approves the interim groundwater well permitting process compliant with the governor's order. On March 28 of this year, the governor signed an executive order due to the drought conditions being experienced throughout the state, which was effective immediately prohibited all responsible agencies from issuing a construction permit for a new groundwater well or alteration of an existing groundwater well unless certain requirements and conditions are met. It also required supplemental information for all well permits. There are a couple of exceptions to the executive order, and those apply to domestic wells and public wells. So Sutter County, we've been accepting the permit since the issuance of the executive order, but we haven't formally processed them pending the development of a procedure. Following discussions within the Department of Development Services and other outside agencies, including the State Department of Water Resources, the department has developed the following interim well permit issuance process for new groundwater well or the alteration of an existing groundwater well. So the process will just be, we'll take in the application, we'll determine whether it's exempt or not. Exemption for a domestic well is the production of less than two acre-feet of groundwater per year. And if so, we're going to, we're seeking to have a signed declaration from the property owner stating that that's its intended use. For the, it'll be the main standard construction detail setbacks, other things that typically apply. The other thing that we're looking at is limiting the casing sizing to eight inches in diameter or less. For the determination, well, groundwater for a public water system, we're also looking at the declaration, which they were also included in your packet, that basically it'll just be used to supply water for human consumption. And those, once they're determined exempt, we'll process those wells as normal. For the other non-exempt wells, which in our county is mainly the ag wells, and we have currently about 13 of those permits, we'll review the construction details, depth of the annular seal, sealing material, estimated water production from the well. And then where applicable is what comes in with this executive order is they're now requiring concurrence and written verification from the different groundwater sustainable agencies. So being that Sutter County has quite a few, the permit will also go to them, we'll contact them. And hopefully that they'll be able to review that and state that the issuance of the well is in concurrence with their plan. For the department at Development Services, the two items that we're going to look at, there's a couple state databases. They have a dry well database. They also have another layer that shows subsidence that may take place within the county. Right now, there's only been two reports of dry wells in Sutter County. Both of those, I believe, are the same well. Didn't give specific details, but it's up in the Live Oak area. And from what I recall, it was a well that was about 30-foot deep. For subsidence, looking on the state database, very little subsidence. There's some that occurs along the Sacramento River, seems to fluctuate. And the aquifers seem to rebound. So there isn't been anything that has been permanent in the way of subsidence. So once we receive the information, we'll review it and process the permit as normal. So that is kind of what we're looking at doing, and hopefully to get these permits that we have moving along. One of the problems is, is there really wasn't any clear guidance. One of the problems is, is there really wasn't any clear guidance from the state. Um, there's currently some legislation trying to put this into law as to certain requirements, and they're about the same as the executive order, so.
Well, thank you very much. Um, all right, well, is there, we'll open up for speaker cards or public comment? No public comment or speaker cards? We'll close that and bring it back to the board for discussion.
To the chair. So, um, first of all, I'd like to thank you for the work you guys have done. The, um, well, for public water systems, I see the application here, and same with domestic wells. Can you walk me through the process, not for domestic wells or, or, uh, public wells, but for ag wells? What's the process we're going to go through in the future to get this process going? And what's the timeline for that?
Well, right now, we plan on revisiting, bringing this back in six months to see if things change or if there's additional guidance. Right now, we'll have the permits that we have. We're going to contact the appropriate GSA. We'll give them a copy of the permit and ask them for their concurrence with 9A of the executive order. At the same time, we're going to go ahead and look at the dry well database and the subsidence information, which it's, I don't anticipate any problems with any of that in these areas where these wells are. And then, once we get the concurrence and written verification back from the GSA, then we'll go ahead and process the permit.
So what's the time, length of time from the time the application goes in to those and the study is being done and, and the GSAs get back to you? What are we talking about, a couple days or a couple weeks?
Um, I'm not sure on the GSAs. Guadalupe Rivera may be able to answer that. I think on the part of the department for what we're going to do, it would be a couple days, um, at, at the most. But Guadalupe, I believe, is, is, uh, the county's GSA representative, and I believe he's been speaking with some of the others. So he might be able to answer that a little better.
Thank you. And, and before he answers, you know, I had a couple calls from a couple farmers today, and they all supported what staff brought forth. And I know it's tough for you guys, you know, for the governor, just to basically say, hey, this is what we're putting this moratorium on wells. And, um, when you have, um, orchards that are going dry.
We understand that people need water.
And it quickly and swiftly, yes.
It was a surprise. It, you know, there wasn't really any notice to it. And, um, so we understand the need, uh, for water. And especially since state has cut their other allocations, um, it's, it's essential, so.
Okay, Guadalupe, what's the process to get through the GSA?
I thank you. Yes, Guadalupe, Principal Engineer. So one thing that I have been doing is coordinating with the other GSAs on, on their processes. And because this is all relatively new with the, um, executive order and the permitting process for this new method, um, we are in, in, in essence, subject to each GSA's, um, timeline. And we're all trying to develop a process where we are in concurrence with each other. Um, and we're working together on that from the 9A side of the executive order. From, as Jeff mentioned, with regard to, uh, the, the county's GSA, which we, we wear two hats in this, in this permitting process now. Um, and so that would be me who would be reviewing the, the application for the 9A portion from the GSA representative. And yes, we would be able to handle that internally within a couple of days.
Okay. Because, you know, we're, we're truly blessed in Sutter County to have, uh, really good aquifers and really good water supply. Um, you know, not all the state has that luxury. Um, if, if I'm not mistaken, the Slurry Lake Basin, I believe, is a mill, 3 million acre foot overdraft per year. We don't have that in Sutter County. But the governor's looking at the county as one size fits all. Well, the state. And Sutter County is a little different. It's like a lot of Northern California states. And we have had almost no, uh, dry wells and almost no, uh, subsidence in my lifetime. And, uh, I think we're truly blessed for that. But we need to, we need to let people get on with life and, and, and keep their crops irrigated and, and their orchards irrigated and so on, so forth. So, um, you know, if we were having problems, it'd be a different story. But I believe that the, most of the GSA data has been coming back, that the aqua is very healthy, correct, Guadalupe?
It is correct. So the, the GSP that was developed for both the North American Sub Basin and the Sutter Sub Basin, um, indicated, yes, that we are pretty close to being in balance, um, as a, as a whole, when we look at it, everything over a long period of time. There are occasions where we have, uh, drought conditions as like, such as we're in now. Um, but then it also gets balanced out when we have wetter conditions. And so if you look at it over a long period of time, as a whole, we are balanced.
It, it's not like we're just looking at this data as in a short timeframe. Some of the districts in the, in the, in the southern part of the county have data on wells going back to the early 50s. So, and every year, the monitoring, matter of fact, I got to go work on a well that they couldn't probe today on my ranch. So anyway, um, uh, I think that that's really something that we need to be aware of. And I would encourage other districts, if they can use conjunctive use districts, that would be a really a good thing also. And I'll leave it at that.
All right, thank you, Supervisor. Okay, with that, we'll look for a motion.
Uh, yeah, move approval?
All right, we have a motion by Supervisor Flores, second by Supervisor Conant. Roll call, please.
Supervisor McKelley?
Aye.
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer?
Yes.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Conant?
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on to item number 30.
Approval to appoint Nicholas Valencia as treasurer tax collector effective June 18th, 2022.
So, um, thank you, Honorable Chair and Supervisor Steve Smith, County Administrator. So, Mr. Valencia, uh, ran, um, a campaign for treasurer tax collector for Sutter County. Um, and he looks mostly assured of victory. He did not have a, an opponent. Um, and it's my recommendation that, um, with, um, staff currently filling in, um, acting in an acting capacity, that with a clear for a victory for, uh, Mr. Valencia, that the board, uh, appoint him effective June 18th as treasurer tax collector. And, um, also, I'd like to thank, um, Christina Hernandez for, uh, filling in, um, over the past, oh geez, 15 months or so, um, and the treasurer staff. But they've already been working some with, uh, Mr. Valencia, as he's in, currently in the Auditor Controller's Office, a very valuable employee there. So we feel very fortunate and, uh, just wanted to make that recommendation.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Conant, second by Supervisor Baines. Oh. I can have you, Rochambeau.
We need to listen to the recording, but that's.
Supervisor McKelley?
Uh, congratulations.
And aye.
Supervisor Flores?
Aye, congratulations.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer?
Aye, looking forward to working with you.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Conant?
Aye, congratulations. Congratulations.
And may I also, may I also recommend that, um, County Clerk Recorder, Register of Voters, Clerk of the Board, many, many titles, Donna Johnston, uh, take this opportunity to swear Mr. Valencia into office.
Yes, and then I'd like to ask if you'd say a couple words afterwards. Is this your family here today? All right. Are you ready for this? It's as much of a job for you as it is for him.
All right, can you raise your right hand? So if you could hold your applause afterwards, because right after that, we're going to invite his wife up to pin the Sutter County pin upon him, his lapel. All right, you ready? Hey, do solemnly swear that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that you take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which you're about to enter. Congratulations. Just like to come on up and put, place the Sutter County pin upon his lapel. All right, did you guys want to come up for a photo or?
Yeah, and we'd like to, um, we're going to put him on the spot, let him say a couple things.
I, I just want to say thank you to every, uh, member of the Sutter County community who voted for me. I know you didn't have much of a choice, but I, I really do appreciate it. And thank you to the board for choosing to appoint me early. I know that it would normally be the first Monday after Jan, in January, I believe. Um, so I really appreciate that. Look forward to getting into the office and getting to work with everyone over there. I know they're a great team over there. I've worked with them a little bit so far, and I'm, I'm really excited. So thank you, and thank you, everyone.
All right, um, moving on to item number 31.
Authorization for the county administrator to execute 16 additional ballots for lands owned by the, by the county of Sutter concerning the Feather River West Levy Financing Authorities' proposed new assessments in order to fund ongoing operation and maintenance expenses for the, for the West Feather River Levees.
Thank you. Yes, after the May 24th meeting where the board, uh, approved a request for 22 ballots for the Feather River West Levy Financing Authority, um, proposed new assessments, an additional 16, um, were received by the office. So we wanted to bring this to the board's attention and seek approval as the board approved for the 22, for the additional 16. Um, and, um, approval for the county administrator to execute these additional 16, uh, ballots in the affirmative. Thank you.
So moved to approve.
Second.
Okay.
Supervisor McKelley?
Aye.
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer?
Aye.
Supervisor Baines?
Nay.
Supervisor Conant?
Aye.
Moving on to item number 32.
Receive a presentation regarding the fiscal year 2022, 23 recommended budget.
Thank you. So, um, Assistant County Administrator Lee Ann Link will handle all of the heavy lifting for this presentation. However, I, I have a few words at first, and if, um, if staff could go ahead, um, to the second slide, so we can begin the presentation.
Pardon me for a minute. Let's take a five-minute break.
UBSutter.live's local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske Truck Rentals. Details at plumislakeselfstorage.com. moving supplies, and Penske truck rentals. Details at plumaslakeselfstorage.com.
the board held a budget study session to give feedback to staff. And then today, June 14th, we have our recommended budget. It was technically public Thursday with the publishing of the agenda for today. And then upcoming next Monday at 10:00 a.m., we will have budget hearings commence. And we look at having the budget adopted on June 28th. Next slide, please. So our theme for this year, for the, well, the upcoming fiscal year 2223 is Sutter County Works For You. And you'll see on this page, we have a variety of pictures of, you know, public works, roads, library, the newly remodeled library, probation, HR, clerk recorder, behavioral health, and sheriff, a variety of folks that provide services throughout the community. And on the next slide, we show a bit of, maybe hard to read for some folks, but the majority of what Sutter County does, Sutter County does for all areas of the county. So sheriff, coroner, the jail, those types of things are done. So up in the box on the top of the page, all of those things are done countywide, so within both cities and all districts for citizens of Sutter County. Boat ramps, swimming pool permitting, environmental health, restaurant inspections. So despite the fact that all the restaurants, not all, a large majority of the restaurants tend to be in cities, county environmental health handles that through the Development Services Program. It goes on and on. Of course, there are some specific areas the county works in the unincorporated area, areas such as county fire, that we, of course, provide mutual aid into the cities, water resources, road maintenance, building permits, land use planning, and law enforcement as well for the unincorporated areas, including Live Oak. On the following slide, geez, these are so hard to read. We need a Dallas Cowboys-sized monitor to be able to read all of these. But we, what, Raiders? Yeah, on the outside of the new stadium in Vegas, where they have massive monitors. But, okay, so you'll see here, this shows, this graph, what it shows is the net county cost of departments in the requested budget for 2223. And six, so from the left being the most net county cost to the right where it fades away. And this is provided online, so if you can't see it from here, you can see it online or we can get hard copies for folks. But six of the top 10 are law enforcement-specific. Seven of the top 10 are public safety in general. So the board dedicates a great deal of funding to public safety, which is the primary purpose of government. The next slide. So the Community Priorities Survey. I couldn't let this go by without mentioning, we've been getting out into the community. We've had four different town halls. We have one upcoming for District 2. We've had the other districts thus far. We've had one internally for employees. And we've gotten notices in the paper a couple times, as well as continually update on Facebook, asking people to be a part of the conversation. Come to suttercounty.org. And at the top our main page, you'll see a link to the survey where you can go to suttercounty.org/community/feedback. Some of the priorities identified in past surveys were addressing homelessness, maximizing local control of funding, maintaining fire and emergency medical and sheriff response times, upgrading firefighting equipment to meet safety standards, preventing the closure of a fire station, repairing roads, and supporting local businesses. And I should be specific, preventing closure of a county fire station versus, there was some confusion apparently with city residents contacting the city council. So I just wanted to make that clear. Before we move on and get more in-depth into this recommended budget, I know we have a slide at the end with some acknowledgements, but I do just want to very briefly point out that all of the departments worked collaboratively on this with the CAO's office. We really appreciate their hard work, from the department heads, assistants, deputies, finance staff, on down through. It takes a huge effort to put together this 800-or-so-page document as required by law. And we're really proud of the work that staff have done. So, but we'll be a little more specific towards the end. So unless there's questions for me, Ms. Link can take it away from here.
Good afternoon. Leeann Link, Assistant County Administrator. So the budget book is 802 pages this year, and it includes every appropriation that the board would make and the estimated supporting revenues. We had this available, as CAO Smith said, last Thursday online. And then we, of course, have hard last couple of years, we've really tried to use a lot more color in the book, using a lot more of the charts and graphs to promote understanding. We have countywide, starting with the board, we have a real commitment to being transparent in our finances. And everything that we do in this budget really is intended to enhance that understanding for people. So again, this year, the narratives in each section, which the book is broken into five sections based on the groupings of different departments, such as public safety or ag and education and culture. Every budget narrative has a reference to where you can actually go in and find the detailed budget to go along with that narrative. So the revenues, the budget is based on revenues estimated at $403,635,593. As the board is well aware, that's not the actual economic impact of this budget. Every time we move money between funds, we have to recognize the revenue and the appropriation. And then it goes into a new fund, we recognize the revenue in that, and then appropriate from there. So sometimes revenue comes in and it's actually appropriated three times before it gets to its final department. And I'll give you an example of that with Prop 172, the one-cent sales tax for public safety. It comes into a special revenue fund, and then we move it out into the public safety fund itself. And so while that's about $11 million, it's now doubled to $22 million. So we do our best to give you something to estimate from about the true economic impact. And we start taking out the movement between funds and also the internal There's a little bit of intergovernmental comes to us, but it only amounts to less than 30%. We have charges for services, which can include anything from development fees to the fees charged in the recorder's office for documents. 0.2% of our overall revenues. We have a little bit of sale of capital assets this year, about $6,000. We have cancellation of obligated fund balance. That's use of our, if we have reserves, for example, or we have special fund balance in a certain special revenue fund, sometimes we appropriate that and move it out. And so we have about $13 million or 5.2%, is that. And then use of unassigned fund balance this year. We are anticipating in the general fund, unassigned carryover fund balance of $11.7 million. That helps us to balance our budget for the coming fiscal year. Finally, we get about 16.1% in taxes. So that's mostly property tax and sales tax for us. And then the rest of the revenues are all relatively small. So total appropriations, it's a balanced budget, so they're also $403,635,593. And once again, we try to pare out that duplication. And so we break down how the revenues are actually spent or how the appropriations actually flow. And so you can see that 51% of our appropriations are for salaries and benefits. That doesn't mean that we'll spend that much. In fact, it's very unlikely that we would spend that much. But this is for budget purposes. And once again, to remind us all that we are a service organization. We provide services, whether it's the deputy patrolling the streets or the correctional officer in the jail, or the staff that supports the board in the board meetings. We provide services overall. We don't really make a product for the most part. 19% or about $50 million goes towards services and supplies. Those are just normal operating costs from uniforms to utilities and other operating costs. Other charges, which is about a quarter of the budget, includes all of the support and care. So that's where we are providing services to individuals. So it might be the cost of jail medical services or the juvenile hall expenditures that we have, or institutionalization of clients who are severely mentally ill, foster care payments, adoptions assistance payments, CalWorks payments. Those all fall into other charges, as well as our cost plan charges where we charge our internal operations out to the various state and federal programs. So to give you an idea of how the appropriations have changed over the last year, this is based on the adopted budget compared to the recommended budget. And you can see that salaries and benefits have increased a little bit. That's normal. We see that every year for step and cola increases. Of course, we saw some fairly excuse me, we saw some fairly large increases for retention and recruitment purposes in the sheriff's budget units. Those are calculated into here. We saw a little bit of dip in services and supplies, not very material. Our other charges went up a little bit also. And then capital assets are down a little bit. When we adopted the budget, we actually included a couple of extra things last year. So it gave a little bit of a different comparison this year. And then our contingency is up a little bit, and I can talk a little bit about that later on in the presentation. And then, of course, increase in obligated fund balance. When we did do the adopted budget last year, we had a little bit more that we put into our reserves at the time. And so by comparison, it looks like we're down, but we're actually even with last year. So breaking down the appropriations, salaries and benefits, of course, is our largest category. So of that, 57% goes to salaries and other pay categories. About 2% goes to overtime. Payroll taxes account for about 4%, so that's FICA and Medicare. Our pension costs account for about 20% of our overall salaries and benefit expense. Health insurance is another 15%. Workers' comp is actually down for us this year, but accounts for about 2% of our overall salary and benefit appropriations. Deferred comp is just a small amount, but that's the county's participation when people contribute to their own deferred comp accounts. And then unemployment is a very small portion of that. We are self-insured for unemployment, and so our unemployment costs tend to be quite low, actually. So this is how the salaries and benefits break out by category. You can see that the largest is public safety in salaries and benefits, of course, you know, which aligns with what we know about the jail and the sheriff's office are our two largest budgets. The general fund accounts for about 18%. Roads is 2%. Behavioral health, which the county has, there's no general fund obligation for behavioral health, and that counts for about 18%. Mental Health Services Act, this year, we've gone back to budgeting separately for appropriations, including staffing in that budget, in that fund. And so overall, behavioral health is about 21% of our budget. And keep in mind that that's for two counties. We're providing services for two counties. Our health budget accounts for about 8% of our total salaries and benefits appropriation. Welfare is, I think that's about 18%. And once again, on the welfare budget, that doesn't have a large net county cost. We have a maintenance of effort level of $432,000 there, even though state and federal sources pick up the other 23 million and change. The trial courts, which is mostly, well, it's entirely probation and the sheriff's bailiffs, that accounts for about 7%. And then you can see the smaller areas, child support, inmate welfare. County Service Area F accounts for about 3% at about $3.3 million. And then the other ones are our internal services funds, so fleet, workers' comp, liability insurance, and information technology. Sure, the CAO's office is recommending a total of 6.0 new positions, a gain of 6.0 FTEs. Health and Human Services has requested nine new positions. Those are mostly in the behavioral health fund. And in many cases, those are intended to generate revenue within there. Development Services has requested a planning assistant and a planning associate, I believe, I'm sorry, and a building inspector in that. In the county administrator's office, Fire Services Administration has requested a battalion chief. And Office of Emergency Management has requested a staff services analyst. Although the way that that position would be structured, probably the staff services analyst is not the most, is not the best classification for that, but we'll come back to the board with a recommendation later on in the year.
Excuse me, Leeann?
Yes, of course.
Do you want to, I had a question pertaining towards this spot right here. I didn't know, I mean, I'm fine with just waiting towards the end. Or do you guys have any questions towards anything that she's already passed up? Okay, I'll ask my question, then. Let's go back to Fire Services and Administration. We're looking for another battalion chief.
Correct.
So that we're headed, we're going to have four battalion chiefs and four firefighters.
That's correct.
Ahead here.
That would make three battalion chiefs.
Well, okay, three battalion chiefs and four firefighters. So.
Four firefighters?
That's, it's, we're losing firefighters faster than we're gaining chiefs, is what I'm getting at. So I see that. I think that's a little, you know, looking at that in the budget. And I think that's something that I'm still not comfortable with. Is our fire chief here today?
He is not, but he will be here Monday for the budget hearings, so he would be able to speak to that. In terms of the requests that they made, keeping in mind that Fire Services Administration oversees the fire departments throughout the unincorporated areas of the county. And so the fire chief has responsibility for, you know, as far down as
I'll be expecting then a full report then on our renegotiation contract with Live Oak, City of Live Oak as well then Monday.
He'll be prepared to answer that question. Yes.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
I just, really fast, it's going to be really tough, you know, I just really, I'd like to see all the department heads here Monday. You know, because it's going to be really tough for, you know, you're asking for money, but we're going to have a lot of questions. Thank you very much.
We'll make sure that they're aware. The assessors actually reducing by a half an FTE position. That's some efficiency that they've gained with their new Amentum service or system. The auditor controller is an increase of just about a half of a position. And that's based on a position that is currently split between the auditor controller and the human resources department. There are more and more regulations and rules and laws that we have to follow regarding our finances. And so they requested an additional half a position for that. Human Resources is requesting 1.05 positions. And that's the 0.55% of the other position with the shared with the auditor controller and also creating or increasing a 0.5 office assistant to a 1.0 human resources assistant. And then child support services, as we're actually transitioning to the Regional Child Support Agency, we're also deleting eight positions there. So for a net gain of 6.0 positions. So this is the pension liability, and this is as of the June 30, 2020 evaluation. You know, we get the evaluations about a year and a half behind, so we won't see the 2021 until later this summer, probably August or September. 2021 until later this summer, probably August or September. At that time, the unfunded liability went up slightly to $176.8 million, and that's for both the miscellaneous group as well as the safety group. The unfunded liability is made up of the future liability less, the actuarially determined future liability for pensions minus the market share of our -- or market value of our assets. So I believe overall, the pension liability is about $400 million plus, but we also have a pretty substantial investment there that PERS invests for us. So as you can see from this chart, we do pay down over the next 22 years, and the unfunded liability within the CalPERS calculation would be completely paid off by 2044. But a few years ago, the board invested in an Internal Revenue Code Section 115 Pension Pre-Funding Trust. And since that time, we've continued to put, since in the last three years, we've continued to put $1 million a year into that trust. And it also gains market value, although probably not after yesterday. In fact, I'll talk in a moment about what the impact of the markets right now will be. But as we continue to contribute to that and as we see a reasonable return on investment, which the number we use is 5%, that's probably a little bit low over what we'll see over time, but at this point, it's better, I think, to be conservative. But that would have us paying off our pension fund, our unfunded liability about five years early, which will save us tens of millions of dollars. So it is very helpful to us to do that. If I were to make a suggestion for the future, it would be to increase that pension pre-funding from the $1 million flat amount to where maybe it's a percentage of our total payroll so that we can accelerate that if we have the money to do it. Last year's CalPERS investment return was about 21.8%, I believe. And so that will have a substantial impact on our unfunded liability, a positive impact on our unfunded liability. When we get the new valuation, we should see it drop down by as much as $20 million. And that will also impact our PERS payments in the future and how quickly we're able to pay off. Unfortunately, this has not been a stellar year on the markets, and especially within the last few weeks, we've seen a pretty significant downturn in the market. But we won't know the impact of that with PERS until 2024. So, you know, we know that we need to be the masters of our destiny with that, which is why investing in the Section 115 trust is really a good way for us to manage that So there are capital projects budgeted in the current budget. We're going to be continuing a few projects. One is the upstairs of 1160 Civic Center Boulevard. The jail bed welding project is carrying over. We're just about completed with a 463 Second Street roof replacement, thankfully, and the airport soils testing, I think, is about $24,000 this year going forward. For new projects, we really tried to focus in areas that we thought we needed to take care of. These are things that, as we've tried to maintain services, we've kind of not kept up on some of our deferred maintenance on our buildings. And so we really tried to focus on certain things that we thought were big-ticket items this year. So parking lot repairs in information technology, 1130 and 1160 Civic Center and the Veterans Hall. Roof projects and probation and general services, both who have significant leak issues. The sheriff's data center will upgrade that area and make sure that the air conditioning and everything works there so that we don't have a dead data loss. And then Development Services has asked for some minor adjustments in the front of their building, and that's actually paid for with the administrative fees associated with the mitigation fees for Center Point. So we kind of are able to take care of those without any new -- without any impact on the general fund. The public health generator replacement is actually being done with outside grant funding, and so there's no general fund impact with that. So going from big picture down to smaller picture, and this is really the funding that's within more of the board's control. So our general fund revenues are $77.3 million, but when we remove the revenue transfers, it comes down to 72, just almost $73 million. You can see that the majority of our funds, or about half, comes from taxes. That's property taxes, sales tax, property transfer tax, and transient occupancy tax, which is a very, very small amount. The second largest, of course, is charges for services, which we've talked about. Fines, forfeitures, and penalties makes up a very small amount. License permitting and fees, you know, all of our general fund departments that provide permits or different business, not business license, but like documents in the clerk recorder's office come through there. Use of money and property primarily is interest and rent revenue as well as our tobacco settlement revenue. Intergovernmental federal is just a little bit that I believe we get for wildlife fees. Intergovernmental local is just some money that comes over from City of Uba City. And then we have the other large one here is use of an unassigned fund balance. Once again, it's that $11.7 million or about 16% of our general fund budget. So to give you an idea of how our revenues break down within the general fund, this is property tax, and we've seen 26.4% growth since 1516. The average annual growth is 3.42%, but as we're seeing the real estate market slow down a little bit, our growth projection for fiscal year 2223 is only 2.51%. As a reminder, under Prop 13, properties can only increase the amount of the cost of living or the CPI or 2%, whichever is less. And so the maximum growth we can see on existing properties is 2% per year. Where we do see growth is when properties exchange ownership and those are reassessed at that time. So that's why we project a little bit more than 2% growth. Sales tax, we've actually seen decreases in two of the last four years, and we're projecting a 5.19% decline for the budget year. We use Hinterleider Delamas, who is a sales tax expert, to help us with projecting revenues. We, you know, the $300,000 or $250,000 reduction here, I think, is based on a perceived softening in the economy. And so we also are seeing some reduction related to a shift in how sales tax is calculated when it comes from online retailers, especially when they're shipping from within California. So if we could actually get a distribution center at Center Point or multiple distribution center, centers at Center Point, even when we're shipping things outside of the county, the county would get credit for that sales tax. But on the flip side of that, the things that are being purchased here and are shipping inside the state, we're now, we are no longer getting the revenue from that in the county So this is just a quick slide on other discretionary revenues. We get a little bit in fines, as I mentioned, a little bit in interest. Our largest growing segment in this has actually been in franchises, which we get franchise fees from PG&E, Verizon, Recology, and Pac Bell. And so this actually is growing a little bit, although not substantially, but it is helping us out a little bit. And then we get a little bit from the dissolution of redevelopment. The old redevelopment agency shifted property tax, and once the state dissolved the redevelopment agencies years ago, once any debt was paid off, that many shifts back to the county proportionally. And then we do get some revenue from Property Tax Administration because we administer property tax not only for the county, but for the cities and the schools and the special districts. But that remains pretty stable. We're not seeing much growth in the property tax admin. This is our cost recovery plan revenue, so we have revenue that we can charge out to the state and federal programs. And we've seen this decline. Part of that is due to a reduction in the costs in the departments that actually generate this revenue. It was tightened up and had less expense in those departments being out, and we don't call this a drivel back. And also, we switched to a different firm to calculate, and so I think they use a little slightly different methodology, and it's starting to actually make sense. And this is, you can see.
That this is substantial revenue for us, and so we hope to see that level off in the next few years.
Excuse me, Leon, does that mean we got to go back to the other firm then?
No.
We like them better.
We do think that, we do think that their methodology is sound with the firm, with MGT that we're using. They're professionals at doing this, and we do think that it's sound methodology. But one of the things that the board could consider is, on the cost plan revenue, years ago, we started not charging special districts for their A7 or super service. Plan charges, we just write that off, so the general needs that. And that's something that the board could consider. You know, Center Cemetery gets a lot of that. The mosquito and vector control district gets the benefit of that, and it's pretty substantial.
That note, when I built my house, I noticed when I, going through the planning department, $1,200 went to the library, and I believe $800 went to the jail.
Yeah, that.
I asked, and I said, wow, that just doesn't make sense to me. And because I believe there should be cost recovery, you know, and those are one-time fees, they're not meant to build a Taj Mahal, but for, you know, for upkeep, for whatever. But there should be somewhere where maybe 800 is the norm. But first of all, I think it should be flip-flop, 1,200 to the jail and 800 to, towards the library. But it should be, whether it be a three-bedroom, two-bath house, you know, that three-bedroom, because the more souls you're building, a 30,000-square-foot home should not have to pay the same fee as a three-bedroom home for those one-time fees going to the jail. It should be per bedroom on extra because theoretically, you're putting more burden on the jail, the sheriff's department, the library, and everything else, all those other sources. And I noticed that other counties have that going on. So that's one thing I really want to look at in this. I know we only have, what do we have, today's Tuesday, so we got six days to figure this out. But to me, it just makes more sense, it just, it doesn't make sense for 800 of those one-time fees going to a library, $300, I'm sorry, $300 less going to the jail or the sheriff's department. And you'll see that when you build a structure, house, you'll see the different light items, light items. It astonishes you, it blow you away that how much goes where. But matter of fact, Neil, can you bring that Monday to the meeting, please, so we could look at that and everyone could?
To the chair.
But matter of fact, Neil, can you bring that Monday to the meeting, please, so we could look at that and everyone could?
To the chair.
Yes.
Sir, those fees as well, we can explain.
UBSutter.live's local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske truck rentals. Details at plumaslakeselfstorage.com.